You will be hearing items nine and 10 concurrently because they're related to the same project. As a reminder, we need to call a separate motion for each item. Item number nine is case B-747611A. U-M-C-U-P. The environmental case number is E-N-V-2016-4676-E-I-R. This project is located at 121 through 147 South Spring Street and various addresses within Council District 14. Commissioners, please note that there has been a technical modification submitted for item number nine. It was emailed to all commissioners on May 12th. Cecilia, are there any DA submissions for this item?
Cecilia Lamas for the record. At this time, I would like to direct the commissioners to their shared drive for DA submissions. We do have DA submissions for this item.
Thank you, Cecilia. At this time, I would like to call on City Planning staff, Will Lamborn, to begin his presentation. Thank you for joining us, Will.
Good morning. Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Will Lamborn with City Planning. Before you is the Times Mirror Square Project, a mixed-use development located on the city block bounded by First Street, Second Street, Spring Street, and Broadway in downtown Los Angeles. Now moving on to the next slide two, which shows a bird's eye view rendering of the proposed project. As shown, the project would retain and rehabilitate the existing Times, Plant, and Mirror Buildings on the eastern portion of the project site, which will be adaptively reused with office uses as well as ground floor retail, restaurant, and grocery store space. The existing executive building and parking structure, which were added to the site in the early 1970s, located on the western portion of the site, would be demolished to allow for the project's new mixed-use component. The project's new development would consist of a 37-story North Tower and 53-story South Tower, constructed above a five-level podium base with nine levels of subterranean parking. Now on to the next slide, requested entitlements. As listed here on the slide, the project's entitlements include: Certification of the Environmental Impact Report; Consideration of an Appeal of the Deputy Advisory Agency's Approval of the Project's Vesting Tentative Tract Map; Transfer of Floor Area Rights from the Los Angeles Convention Center to the project site; Vesting Conditional Use to Permit Floor Area Averaging; and Master Conditional Use Permit for Alcohol Sales. Now moving on to the next slide four for site context. And on to the next slide, here is an aerial view of the project site showing surrounding streets and uses. The project site is highlighted in yellow and is bounded by First Street, Second Street, Broadway, and Spring. To the north of the project site is the future First and Broadway Civic Center Park, as well as Grand Park and Los Angeles City Hall. To the west across Broadway is the 10-story Federal Courthouse Building, completed in 2016. To the east across Spring Street is the existing LAPD Headquarters Building. And to the south across Second Street is the construction site for the future Metro- Second and Broadway Subway Station, anticipated to open in 2022. A current development proposal for the Subway Station site includes demolition of an existing parking structure and the construction of a 56-story mixed-use building. Now on the next slide, of an aerial view of the surrounding area, a view of the site as seen from the south. On the lower left of the image, you can see the cluster of existing high-rise buildings in Bunker Hill and the Financial Core. The project's site, again highlighted in yellow in the center of the image, as shown in the image, the project vicinity is characterized by a broad mix of government-related uses, high and mid-rise office buildings, residential buildings, hotels, retail, and cultural amenities. Moving on to the next slide seven, Existing Zoning and Land Use, is an image from ZEMIS. The project site is located in the Central City Community Plan Area and has a general plan land use designation of regional commercial. The project site is Zone C-24D-S-N, Commercial Zone within Height District Four. The project site is subject to an existing delimitation and a community plan map footnote that restrict FAR on the site to a maximum of six to one, with the exception of projects approved for transfers of floor area up to 13 to one FAR. With the proposed T-FAR, the project would result in a maximum FAR of 9.42 to one, which is below the maximum established for the project site. Surrounding properties to the south are similarly zoned C-24D with land use designations of regional commercials, shown here in pink. And surrounding properties to the north, as well as immediately to the west and east, are generally designated and zoned for public facilities, shown here in green. Now the next slide is an aerial view for context of the existing onsite buildings. The project site is currently improved with the Times Mirror Square complex, which covers the entirety of the site. Times Mirror Square is comprised of five internally connected buildings that were formerly used by the Los Angeles Times, as well as other office uses and a bank. Specifically, in the foreground, within the eastern portion of the site oriented towards Spring Street, the project site includes the eight-story Times Building and four-story Plant Building, constructed in 1935, and the 10-story Mirror Building, constructed in 1948, all of which would be retained under the project. Within the western portion of the site oriented towards Broadway are the six-story Executive Building and Parking Garage, constructed in 1973, which are proposed to be demolished to allow for the project's new mixed-use construction. Now for the next couple of slides, we'll show street-level views around the project site. Looking north on Spring Street, the existing Times and Plant Buildings are shown to the left, with Los Angeles City Hall farther to the north. On the next slide, looking west on Second Street, the existing Mirror Buildings shown on the corner of Spring and Second Streets. The ongoing metro construction shown to the left across Second Street. Now next slide, looking north on Broadway, here is the existing parking structure. And slide 12, showing an east view on First Street with the Executive Building and Times Building on the right-hand side. City Hall shown here to the left, as well as the site of the future First and Broadway Civic Center Park on the left. Next slide, we'll now go into a section on project details. Here now on slide 14 is a table summary of the project's proposed uses. The project proposes 1,127 residential units and 34,572 square feet of retail uses within the proposed new mixed-use construction. The Times Plant Mirror Buildings would be adaptively reused with office, ground floor, restaurant, and grocery store uses. In total, including the existing buildings to remain, the project would comprise 1,511,908 square feet of floor area. Next slide, here's a site plan of the ground floor, shows the proposed retail, restaurant, and grocery store uses. The top half of the image is the ground floor of the retained LA Times Building, and on the bottom half, the ground floor of the proposed new mixed-use construction. As shown, the site would be bisected by a 20,000-square-foot publicly accessible pedestrian paseo connecting First Street and Second Street. The paseo would provide a visual break between the restored existing buildings and the new construction, and would also highlight the newly exposed and restored original western facade of the Times Building. Active ground floor uses would line the paseo on both sides. The paseo would also connect the future Metro Station to the future First and Broadway Park. Vehicular access is provided, as shown here, via driveways on Broadway and Second Street. On the next slide, it's a planned view of podium levels two through five, which provide above-grade parking. The podium's frontage on First Street and Second Street would be wrapped with residential units that also continue around the northern and southern portions of the Broadway frontage. In total, the project proposes to provide 1,744 parking spaces, located within the podium and nine subterranean levels, which exceeds LAMC requirements. Here next on slide 17, it's a planned view of the Level Six podium roof, shown on the bottom of the slide. The podium roof provides outdoor open space and amenities for project residents located in between the two proposed towers. Again, the paseo is shown in the center of the image. Although not required by code, the project will also provide open space areas and roof decks for the commercial uses within the Times and Plant Buildings, which are shown here on the upper portion of the slide. Now next slide is a site plan showing the north and south towers, which would rise from the podium, with the podium roof terrace and paseo open to the sky from below. The towers provide the remainder of the project's residential units. Now slide 19, our elevations, as shown from First Street and Spring Street. As seen from First Street, on the left-hand side of the slide is the retained Times Building. North Tower, shown on the right-hand part of the slide, as seen from Spring Street, are the retained LA Times Buildings, with the new construction in the background. As shown in the elevations, the north and south towers would be clad in a glass window wall system with aluminum mullions and would include staggered offset groups of balconies. Similarly, on the next slide, elevations from Broadway and Second Street. Our elevations from Broadway shown on the left and on the right, as seen from Second Street. Now the next section, we'll briefly address some project issues related to T-FAR, Historic Resources, and the podium design. Next slide, Transfer of Floor Area. Per the LAMC, to initiate a T-FAR request for the transfer of unused allowable floor area, the applicant must submit a transfer plan identifying the donor site, receiver site, amount of floor area rights for transfer, and proposed public benefits. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting a T-FAR approval from the Los Angeles Convention Center, shown here in blue on the map on the bottom, to be transferred to the project site shown in yellow. The project site is located outside of the Central City Redevelopment Plan Area. Now next slide, slide 23, we have a chart to show how the project's proposed public benefits payment are calculated in accordance with the requirements of the LAMC. In this instance, the applicant purchased the project site within 18 months prior to filing the application with planning, and therefore, the sales price is required to be used for valuation of the receiver site. As shown in the chart, the applicant is required to pay a total of $23,9782 for the total public benefit payment. The LAMC further requires that at least 50% of this total be provided as a cash payment to the Public Benefit Trust Fund. The remaining 50% of the total payment may be provided by direct provisions of public benefits by the applicant. The LAMC's T-FAR provisions require that the transfer plan serve a public purpose. The code specifically lists several qualifying categories for such public benefits, which are expressly stated to include affordable housing, public open space, recreational facilities, and historic preservation. The project's proposed direct provision public benefits are consistent with these requirements established in the LAMC. Next slide, T-FAR Proposed Public Benefits. As shown here is a chart that breaks down the project's specific proposed benefits. As shown, the project would allocate 31% of the public benefit direct provision to the Citywide Affordable Housing Trust Fund and 8% to the Pershing Square Renovation Fund. The project proposes to allocate 61% of the direct provisions towards onsite historic renovation of the retained Times Buildings that go beyond the requirements of the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. These proposed elective treatments that exceed the standards primarily involve the restoration of previously removed original features and the removal and replacement of existing non-compatible features. Specifically, such treatments would include the removal and replacement of various nonoriginal doors, windows, frames, light fixtures, and flooring. Limestone piers and cladding would be reconstructed where they are currently missing on the west elevation, within the area that will be newly revealed by the demolition of the Executive Building. The elective features also include new first-story entrances, door openings, and storefronts on the newly revealed west elevation. Although the total estimated cost of the restoration features in excess of the standards with a total of $14 million, the applicant is seeking to credit $7 million of these costs towards the project's T-FAR public benefit direct provision. The methodology for determining the cost of the onsite public benefits is consistent with what is typically used on other T-FAR projects. It is also worth noting that this project is likely the first T-FAR case that we have had that has had a historic preservation component. Further, the city's Office of Historic Resources has reviewed the proposed treatments in relation to the Secretary of the Interior Standards and has concurred that the approach is sound. The project's conditions of approval on T-FAR further provide that the Office of Historic Resources shall review and approve the final scope of these renovation components prior to issuance of a building permit. Now next slide 25, regarding Historic Resources. As detailed in the draft EIR and accompanying technical reports, the project would result in significant and unavoidable impacts to historic resources after the implementation of all feasible mitigation due to the proposed demolition of the executive building and parking structure, which are shown in photos on the right of the slide. Therefore, a statement of overriding considerations is before the commission. In addition, after the release of the project's initial study, an application was submitted to nominate the entire block of Times Mirror Square as a historic cultural monument. Ultimately, in December 2018, the city council's designation excluded the executive building and parking structure, and as a result, only the Times, Plant, and Mirror Buildings are now designated as City HCM. Notwithstanding the council's action, the executive building and parking structure were considered in the E-I-R to be historic resources for the purposes of CEQA. Lastly, commenters on the project have expressed concerns on the project's height, in particular relative to City Hall. While the project would exceed existing predominant building heights along First Street and Grand Park, the project's scale would be consistent with other proposed buildings in the vicinity. The site zoning allows for unlimited height, and the project is appropriately utilizing the transfer of floor area rights as envisioned for the project site by the Central City Community Plan. Lastly, as detailed in the EIR, the project would not result in impact to City Hall that would impair its integrity as a historic resource, and indirect historic impacts would be less than significant. Now next slide 26, Historic Resources. The project would also provide a significant benefit to historic resources through the rehabilitation and restoration of the original character of the Times Mirror and Plant Buildings, as it would restore the original western facade of the Times Building that was destroyed by the addition of the Executive Building in 1973. The project would enliven the ground floor of the retained buildings with retail, grocery, and restaurant uses. The project also sets back the new construction, a total of 50 feet from the curb on First Street, to allow for continued prominent and expansive views of the Times Building. The extensive setback would be activated by ground floor retail uses and a publicly accessible plaza. Next slide, we will briefly discuss the podium design, which evolved throughout the process in response to comments from city staff. In order to minimize the appearance of above-grade parking, the podium's frontage on First Street and Second Street would be fully wrapped with residential units that continue around the northern and southern portions of the Broadway frontage. Where not wrapped, the podium design features vertical stone elements that repeat in regular intervals to provide continuity with the existing materials, rhythm, and features of the Times Building. Along Broadway, the podium base would also be clad with fritted glass, as well as the stone material. The overall height and bulk of the podium would reflect the massing of the shoulder of the adjacent Times Building and the Federal Courthouse. Next slide, shows a nighttime rendering of the project's frontage on First Street. The repeated limestone pattern is shown on the right. And next slide 29, a daytime rendering of First and Broadway shows the relationship of the podium design, materials, and massing relative to the adjacent buildings. Next slide, also before the commission is an appeal of the project's vesting tentative tract map. The appeal points raised primarily relate to the project's environmental impact report. The appeal attached as justification, a letter that had been previously submitted by the appellant in October 2019, following the publication of the project's final E-I-R. The city previously provided detailed responses to these comments. Both the appellant's October 2019 letter and the city's complete responses are included as attachments to the appeal staff report. On May 4th, the appellant submitted a new letter to the commission providing additional information in support of the appeal. The majority of the comments provided in the May letter repeat the same information from the appellant's previous comments, while also providing some additional arguments related to the same topics. In particular, the May 4th letter maintains that the project would result in biological resources impacts due to bird collisions with the project's windows, and that the project would adversely affect indoor air quality due to formaldehyde emissions from furniture and finishing materials used to construct the building's interiors. The appellant's letter also maintains that there are inaccuracies in the project's air quality and traffic modeling. Staff has submitted an additional transmittal to the commission dated May 12th, addressing these claims in detail, with expert memos provided on the issues of biological resources, air quality, and traffic. As demonstrated in the city's responses in detail, the appeal has not provided evidence to demonstrate that the project would result in new or substantially increased impacts or that any of the other criteria for recirculation of the draft EIR under the CEQA guidelines are met. Contrary to the appellant's assertions, the EIR is adequate and its conclusions are based on substantial evidence in the whole of the record. Therefore, planning staff recommends that the commission deny the appeal and sustain the actions of the advisory agency in approving the tract map and certifying the E-I-R. Now next slide, moving on to the recommended actions. In conclusion, the Times Mirror Square Project will contribute to addressing the shortage of housing in the city while adaptively reusing the historic Times, Plant, and Mirror Buildings. The project's complementary mix of uses would be appropriately located in a transit-rich area, near major employment centers and amenities. The project is consistent with the growth pattern envisioned in local and regional plans and overriding considerations of the project's benefits justify its adoption. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission deny the appeal and recommend that the city council approve a transfer of floor area rights and approve the vesting conditional use for floor area averaging and master conditional use for alcohol. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Are there any technical questions at this time? Being none, I'm going to go ahead and call the applicant, or sorry, the appellant. We're now going to hear from the appellant's representative, Richard Drury. Your line is about to be unmuted. You'll hear a message that states you are unmuted. And once your line is unmuted, please let me know how much time you'd like to address the commission.
Commissioner, Ms. Cecilia Lamas for the record. To make a correction, we do have Paige Fenny, who is speaking as an appellant. And Marcos will go ahead and proceed to unmute her.
Thank you. Welcome, Paige.
Thank you, and five minutes should be sufficient.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paige Fenny, an associate of Richard Drury, and I am here on behalf of the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, also known as SAFER, concerning the E-I-R for this project. As stated in our written comments, it is evident that the SEIR fails to adequately respond to comments, fails to adequately analyze significant environmental impacts, and fails to mitigate significant impacts that will occur as a result of the project. We therefore request that the City Planning Commission require the city to address these shortcomings in a revised draft E-I-R. CEQA requires that an agency analyze the potential environmental impacts of its proposed actions in an E-I-R and avoid or reduce environmental damage when feasible. If the project will have a significant effect on the environment, the agency may approve the project only if it finds that it has eliminated or substantially lessened all significant effects on the environment where feasible. The lead agency may deem a particular impact to be insignificant only if it produces rigorous analysis and concrete substantial evidence justifying the findings. The lead agency must also evaluate comments on the draft EIR and prepare detailed written responses to all significant environmental issues raised by commenters. Here, the city failed to adequately respond to comments and failed to adequately analyze several significant environmental impacts we raised in our comment letters. First, the city failed to make full and accurate responses to comments concerning the project's impacts to historical resources. The city believes, based on Senate Bill 743, that any aesthetic impacts to historical resources are considered not significant. Senate Bill 743 states that aesthetic impacts of a mixed-use residential center project on an infill site within a transit priority area shall not be considered significant impacts on the environment. However, Senate Bill 743 goes on to state that aesthetic impacts do not include impacts on historical and cultural resources. Therefore, the impacts on historical and cultural resources must be considered separately from aesthetic impacts. The city's incorrect reliance on Senate Bill 743 cannot be used as an excuse to not analyze the significant impacts to historical resources within the project site and cannot be used as a cursory response to the comments it received on the draft E-I-R concerning the project's impacts to the historical resources. Second, SAFER provided expert evidence to show that the project will pose several significant impacts that the city failed to analyze in the E-I-R, yet the city failed to produce rigorous analysis and concrete substantial evidence to justify its finding that these impacts are insignificant. SAFER provided expert evidence from wildlife biologist Dr. Sean Smallwood, who concluded that the project would result in significant impacts to birds colliding with the project's clear glass windows. Specifically, Dr. Smallwood predicted the project would cause 2,310 bird deaths per year. However, despite the city's duty to investigate potential environmental impacts, the city has thus far attempted to deny Dr. Smallwood's expert analysis and refused to consider with any informed expertise the likely impacts of window collisions on birds posed by the project. Dr. Smallwood also identified specific feasible mitigation measures the city could implement to address the project's impacts on birds, such as guidelines on building design intended to minimize collision hazards to birds. However, the city refused to consider these mitigation measures as it concludes without informed expertise that the project will cause less than significant impacts on birds. SAFER also provided evidence that the project may have significant health risk impacts on future residents and employees from formaldehyde emissions that will be emitted by finishing materials used to construct interiors of the project. Despite the city's duty to investigate issues relating to the project's potential impacts, the city has attempted to deny the indoor air quality analysis and refused to consider with any informed expertise the impacts of indoor formaldehyde emissions posed by the project. Certified industrial hygienist Bud Offerman calculated that the project will pose a cancer risk of 112 per million to residents, which is more than 11 times greater than the South Coast Air Quality Management District's cancer risk threshold of 10 per million. For employees of the project's commercial spaces, the expected exposure represents a cancer risk of 16.4 million, which also exceeds the South Coast Air Quality Management District's cancer risk threshold. The city has failed and refused to analyze these impacts. Therefore, the city lacks substantial evidence to conclude the project will not pose a significant indoor air quality impact. For these reasons, as well as those in our written comments, we request that the City Planning Commission require the city to address these shortcomings in a revised draft E-I-R. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're now going to hear from the applicant's representatives. I believe we have Dale Goldsmith and Chris Martin, who are on the line. If we could unmute their line, and who are unmuted. If you could let me know how much time you're going to need for your presentation, keeping in mind that you will only have five minutes to address the appeal.
Honorable Commissioners, this is Dale Goldsmith, Armbrister Goldsmith and Delvac. We also have Mark Spector of ONI, who would like to preface our remarks with a couple of minutes. I think our total presentation will be, I'd like to have 15 minutes. We'll endeavor to have it less, and I think we will have much less than five minutes to respond to the appeals.
Thank you very much. 15 minutes is fine. Cecilia, if you could make sure everyone who needs to speak is unmuted, we'd appreciate it, and we will go ahead with the presentation. Commissioners, I'm going to refer you to the shared drive for the presentation.
Good morning. Mark Spector from ONI is on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Spector. I'm the Vice President of Development at ONI Group. I'm the owner and developer of the LA Times Project. I would like to thank the Planning Commission for the opportunity to present remotely today, and applaud their efforts in continuing to hold hearings during these challenging times. We realize the significance of this development effort of the city, and our team of AC Martin Partners, Brendel Levin and Associates, and GPA Historic Consultants is up to the task of delivering a world-class project the city will be proud of, and just like they have done on other marquee projects such as Wilshire Grand, Dodger Stadium, and even City Hall. Early in the development process, we identified three main goals. The first being historic preservation. The preservation work goes far above the requirements. Not only will we be completing a full facade restoration and preserving key interior spaces, including the Globe Lobby and restoring the Hugo Ball and Mural, we will also be taking the office space through a thoughtful modernization to bring it up to the standards that tomorrow's tenants will desire, and we will be creating a new west-facing facade that was destroyed by the 70's additions. The second goal is to bring back life to the sidewalks. Our plan will feature shops, restaurants, grocery store, and lobby space along all of the ground floor frontage. We will also have a new publicly accessible paseo that will link the under-construction Regional Connector Station on Second Street to Fab Park on First Street, further connecting the dots from Grand Avenue to the Civic Center and the rest of downtown. And the third goal was to incorporate a critical mass mix of uses into the project, with over 1,100 residential units, 285,000 square feet of renovated historic office space, and up to 100,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space, with a total project size of 1.5 million square feet. With these goals in mind, I would like to introduce Chris Martin from AC Martin Partners to continue the presentation. Thank you.
This is Chris Martin. Thank you, Mark. This is Chris Martin, and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission and planning staff. Dealing with an entire city block of historical stature is tricky business. I'm so pleased that this solution just does a beautiful job of cleaning up and preserving the Times Headquarters Building and puts it in a prominent position on Civic Center Mall. It also handles the density of new housing, which is sorely needed in the area. One of the things I've always been pleased with is bringing high-density housing into the Civic Center, where we have such a tremendous public transportation system that affords high use by this density of housing. Additionally, we have added quite a bit of retail and restaurants, and this is something that I'm particularly proud of, is that the pedestrian activities for the entire city block is not only upgraded to handle a large density, but the addition of this paseo through the block really makes for a very beautiful and historically sensitive solution for the type of housing and density that we're bringing into the site. So from an urban planning context, I think it's extremely well addressed. From a historical- From a historical context, we have also addressed the Times Building as a prominent First Street presence, and noticed that the new additions step back from the First Street front so that the Times Building sticks out and actually has a really good view from all the public areas. So the treatment of the historical LA Times Headquarters Building is very sensitively being done, including the restoration of the limestone area and the other facades that have been covered up. The addition of the residential and the retail is supportive for the density that we need in the Civic Center, and I'm just pleased as can be that this entire project is now finally coming together, and look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you.
This is Dale Goldsmith again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Oh, thank you. Once again Dale Goldsmith, Armbrister Goldsmith and Del Vack. I'd like to preface my remarks by commending staff in a very thorough staff report including the appeal response. I'd like to briefly elaborate on my May 8 letter to you that documents the request for the public benefit direct payment for historic preservation. As will stated, ONI is seeking a TFR of 548,440 square feet to the project's site and would be paying a total TFR payment of approximately $24 million. The TFR will allow ONI to develop an iconic mixed-use project that also preserves and restores the key historic buildings on the site. LAMC Section 14.5.9b provides that up to 50% of the public benefits payment can be provided by the direct provision of public benefits for public purposes. These public benefits expressly include historic preservation. Therefore, ONI proposes that about half of the public benefits payment be used to provide for the following public benefits: 3.65 million to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, $1 million to Pershing Square, and approximately $7.3 million as a credit towards additional voluntary historic preservation work on the site that exceeds the applicable requirements. In December 2018, the City Council designated the Times Plant and Mir Buildings on the site as historic cultural monuments. The city uses the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation in proving work on monuments. ONI estimates that the cost of this required work will be approximately $35 to $37 million, but ONI is not seeking any credit for this work. In addition, ONI is committed to voluntary work in excess of the requirements of the standards to return and restore the building, this historic important resource, these three buildings, to their original splendor for the public to enjoy for many years to come. ONI is being guided by Teresa Grimes of GPA Consulting, who often consults for the city and performed extensive work on Survey LA. Teresa identified a broad scope of voluntary work, and that is included in Exhibit 2 to our May 8 letter. The work includes restoring a significant proportion of the west side of the Times Building that was removed during construction of the Executive Building, which will be demolished by the project. In addition, the work includes recreating the original design of the highly visible wall, removing and replacing countless non-compatible features such as doors, windows, and storefronts, restoring the historic Globe Lobby in the Times Building, and restoring the interiors of all three buildings. The voluntary work provides a very important historic preservation public benefit as compared to only carrying out the minimum work required by the standards. WJE, a consulting firm that has expertise in engineering and architecture and extensive historic preservation experience, comprehensively evaluated the voluntary work. A detailed line-out of cost estimate is included in our May 8 letter. WJE concluded the cost of this work will range from $13 million to $15 million. However, ONI is only requesting a credit of approximately $7.3 million for the additional voluntary work. This is only about the half of its actual costs. ONI has not requested a full credit to be able to provide public benefits payment for needed affordable housing and for improvements to Pershing Square. We respectfully request that you follow staff's recommendation and approve the TFR request and direct public benefits as proposed. Regarding the appeal, I'd once again like to commend staff for a very thorough appeal response that addresses all the arguments in the appeal. And I'd like to summarize these briefly, however, first I'd like to point out that the appellant SAFER is really just a front for the laborers' union La Jona. As you know, the Lozo Drury Law Firm has appeared before this commission on behalf of its client La Jona many times. However, after La Jona was sued for unfair business practices and federal RICO violations for allegedly misusing the SEQUA process to extract labor concessions, Lozo Drury suddenly began representing SAFER instead. However, SAFER and La Jona are one and the same. They have the same addresses and the same officers. Please take this into account when you consider the appeal. As staff noted, SAFER makes several arguments. First, they claim that the project's significant impacts to historic resources also constitute significant aesthetic impacts, in effect a double whammy. However, this is not what SEQUA provides. The project's aesthetic impacts were deemed less than significant under state law as the project is a transit priority project.
Five minutes remain.
The EIR's approach is consistent with all the other EIRs in the city that have addressed this issue. SAFER further maintains that the EIR should have used a more than decade-old draft SCA-QMD threshold of significance that was never adopted to assess greenhouse gas or GHG impacts. Consistent with SEQUA, controlling case law, and the city's standard approach, the EIR assessed GHG impacts based on the project's consistency with applicable GHG reduction plans. If the EIR found the project to be consistent with these plans, it properly found the impacts to be less than significant. SAFER also asserts that the project would result in significant impacts due to bird strikes, traffic, and indoor air quality. Each of these assertions is refuted by expert technical reports that are attached to both the original and the supplemental staff reports. These expert reports, including reports from expert biology and air quality experts, that thoroughly refute the memos from Messrs. Smallwood and Offerman referred to in the appellant's oral presentation. These expert reports show that the appeal's arguments are not supported by substantial evidence, but consist entirely of speculation, opinion, unfounded opinion, and errors in fact, law, or both. Accordingly, we respectfully request that you deny the appeal and uphold the Deputy Advisor Agency's approval of the vesting tentative frac map. I and the team are available for any further questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. We will now open the public testimony for this item. Each speaker who wishes to speak, please press *9 at this point. Each speaker who has pressed *9 will have one minute to speak. The commission staff, Marcos, will call out the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. Please state your name clearly, and then proceed with your comments. You will hear a message that states you are unmuted. Marcos, please go ahead.
Thank you, President. To those for the record, caller 5684, you are unmuted.
Good morning, my name is Sammy O'Nieto, and I am here as part of this project. The applicant has worked closely with the community to propose a project that is compatible with the surrounding area and beneficial to the local community. The project adds more than 1,000 residential units, as well as quality retail and restaurant spaces that will serve the large number of daytime employees in the heart of the city's Civic Center. We strongly urge you to support the community benefits by approving this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller 9398, you are unmuted.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Shamari Davis, I'm a business rep for IBEW Local 11 here in Los Angeles, represent about 12,000 workers, and we are really excited about this monumental project in the city of LA, and we wholeheartedly support this project. The applicant has ensured that he will hire local contractors, the employment of local workers, and will support the local workforce and development. This is a great opportunity for us and one of the projects we should definitely continue to support. We wholeheartedly support this project. It's a great project for middle-class jobs continuing in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller 5747, you are unmuted.
Good morning, my name is Chris Cheek, I'm representing Plumbers Local 78 here in downtown Los Angeles, and we support this project. Los Angeles is in a housing crisis that needs to be addressed as quickly as possible. This project will provide 1,127 homes for families that desperately need them, as well as a lot of retail and restaurant space. Let's deal with our housing crisis immediately and ensure that good construction jobs are supported by approving this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Caller 3821, you are unmuted.
Good morning, my name is Zach with Arms of LA, and we support this project. We work to assist at-risk youth, veterans, people experiencing homelessness, and anyone in need of a second chance. We are especially enthusiastic about the local hire component on this project. We have firsthand knowledge of the benefits of local hire programs. Many of our members have secured jobs and careers in the construction industry. This project is a great opportunity for our community, and we ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Caller 8197, you are unmuted.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Germaine, on the behalf of Sheet Metal Workers Union, Local 105 here in Los Angeles, we support this project. This project benefits our local economy and our local workforce. The commercial and residential space on the project will attract new and surrounding residents, creating new opportunities for our local businesses, and provide long-term jobs. The value of restoring Los Angeles' historic buildings also cannot be overstated. I urge you to take advantage of this great opportunity by approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Caller 2531, you are unmuted.
Good morning, my name is Gus Torres, on behalf of UA Local 250 Pipe Fitters, Welders, and Apprentices, and we support this project. The applicant is as committed to a good project as it is committed to local hire and paying fair wages for the workers who will build this housing and commercial space for our city. We urge you to say yes to more important investments in our local community and our local workers by approving this project. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you very much.
Caller 5572, you are unmuted.
Good morning, my name is Doug Summers, I represent UA Local 709, Higher Sprinkler Fitters, Los Angeles, an organization that's been doing work in the great city of LA for over 100 years. This applicant has made strong commitments to the skilled crafts and providing good-paying jobs, local hire, and using responsible contractors. This project ensures good-paying construction jobs and guarantees a safe working environment for our workers by minimizing health and safety hazards. We urge you to approve this project, please. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Caller 1474, you are unmuted.
Good morning, I'm Michael Schillstone with Central City Association. We're very supportive of ONI's Times Square project, which will bolster the Civic Center's growth as a neighborhood to live, work, and visit in downtown. It'll bring vitality to this area with a mix of uses, including a ground floor reserved for restaurants and a grocery store, plus a public passeo. Modeled after the San Francisco Pier, the public passeo will be a delightful attraction, especially for tourists visiting nearby destinations including City Hall and the Bradbury Building. It will also support nearby major public investments like First and Broadway Park and Metro's Regional Connector. Recognizing our city's unique history, the project also preserves one of downtown's precious architectural gems, the LA Times Building. We're thrilled that ONI Group continues to invest in downtown's future. We're excited to support this project, and urge you to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller 7768, you are unmuted.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, my name is Giovanni Alar, the founder of IL of Homelage LA, and I support this project. The applicant is working with the community in a way that exceeds expectations to ensure that this project keeps the core identity of the area alive, while offering many new things to benefit the neighborhood. The project passeo is well thought out and provides pedestrians access to the historic building and additional retail. I strongly urge you to approve this project. Okay? Once again, I strongly urge you to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Giovanni.
Caller 8687, you are unmuted.
My name is Richard Shave, and I am the principal author of the Historic Cultural Monument nomination for Times Mirror Square, and I am asking the commission to accept the appeal and deny the EIR. I trust you've all read the plea released by the US DOJ yesterday describing how a private citizen worked with Jose Wezar, serving as the Giuliani to Wezar's Trump, creating alternative city planning feedback loops predicated on bribery, extortion, shell corporations, nepotism, and money laundering. A principal point of public interface for Wezar's criminal enterprise is this commission.
I'm sorry, are you...
When I went to Wezar's City Hall office before the Plum hearing to speak with the staff, I found the FBI sealed the office. When I asked for a meeting with Wezar's replacement, Marquis Harris Dawson, before Plum, his staff told me there's no need to meet since they intended to follow Wezar's direction on Times Mirror Square. Plum rewrote the landmarking designation for the benefit of the developer, ONI Group, and yesterday's RICO's filing mentions ONI Group's $50,000 donation to Jose Wezar's wife's political action committee.
Richard, that is your time, thank you for your testimony.
Caller 4637, you are unmuted.
Caller 4637, you are unmuted. Caller with the phone number ending in 4637, it is your time.
Los Angeles, I've been here for seven years, and I am in support of this project. The BCU Local Resident, one of the issues that we have are the lack of grocery stores and places to congregate and eat in the area, and usually we end up having to drive outside of where we live to do such practices. This project would definitely give us an opportunity to support local businesses in our area, it'll also entitle people to have jobs and employment. So with that said, I'm definitely in support of this project, and lastly, I'm also pleased with the fact that it will maintain the integrity of the LA Times Building, while also providing the architecture and buildings and creative space, you know, to, I guess, be with it. So I'm definitely in support.
Thank you. Before we mute his line, I think we missed your name. Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Charles Davis.
Thank you very much.
Caller 7654, you are unmuted.
Yes, hello?
We can hear you.
Yes, I think I'm not speaking on the right item.
Okay.
I queued in early.
Okay, thank you. When the item you want to speak on is called, please press *9 at that time. Thank you.
Caller 8619, you are unmuted.
Good morning, this is Carol Cetrone with the Silver Lake Heritage Trust, and I'm here to support the appeal of this project. When the Cultural Heritage Commission approved historic designation in September of 2018, they were emphatic in their support of both the Art Deco original and the exquisite blending of the Pereira Edition from 1973. The press serves as the eyes and ears of an informed community, and I find it a bit ironic that the building threatened by this project is the historic home of the LA Times, which is currently keeping us all abreast of the very same misconduct that has played a primary role in the interference and corruption of the historic designation of this site. I feel it would be culturally a cultural crime and damaging to our city to allow the demolition of any portion of this building. It served a central role in every aspect of the history of Los Angeles. Please deny the EIR, reject this proposal, and reserve your approval for a development plan that preserves and protects the existing culturally and historically significant site. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner, we have no more hands up.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to go ahead and.
Sorry Commissioner, to interject, we just got one more that raised their hand.
Great.
Caller one six two eight, you are unmuted.
Hello, is this item number eleven that we are speaking on? This is not, this is item number nine in test. Okay, thank you very much, I'll call back. Thank you.
Caller two five zero zero, you are unmuted.
Thank you Commissioners, this is Patty Berman, President of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I believe you have our letter on file of approval of this particular project, and I'm not going to take much of your time, but we do need the housing, and our board spent a great deal of time going over the pros and cons of this project, and have come up with a letter of support, which I hope you will take to heart. It's a good thing to build housing around here, the grocery store is very much needed, and it is a good area for density. Thank you very much.
Thank you Patty. That is the last speaker we have for this item, so we're going to go ahead and close public testimony. Staff, would you like to address any of the issues raised?
Um, yeah, Will Lamborn, City Planning, just very briefly, a couple items mentioned by the appellant, and we also have a couple of brief responses to issues raised in the day of submissions, which I can share as well. Regarding the assertions of aesthetic impact and historic impacts, as was also stated by the applicant's representative, Senate Bill seven forty-three exempts qualifying in film excuse projects from aesthetics analysis as a matter of state law. SB seven forty-three also expressly states that this does not apply to historic resources. This is meant to mean that SB seven forty-three, while it exempts the project from aesthetics impacts, that the project still must evaluate potential impacts to historic resources, which it does, and as has been discussed before, the project has full analysis of such potential impacts and concludes that they would be significant unavoidable from the standpoint of historic resources due to the demolition of the parking structure and executive building. Regarding the impacts to biological resources, the appellant had stated that the city had not based its responses on any informed expertise. I would just note that in the most recent, in particular, communication to the commission from planning is based upon expert evidence from the consulting firm ESA's Principal Conservation Biologist, who has concurred and supported the city's response from an expert opinion in that regard. Downtown Los Angeles is not a primary flight path or migratory corridor for birds. The city has fully responded to these issues in the various responses which you have before you. Regarding the health risk of formaldehyde, it is noted that the California Air Resources Board, which is the state of California's primary regulatory agency with authority over this issue, has fully studied it and issued a regulatory control order that is in effect over all such products in use in the state. The project would be required to comply with these regulations. And CARB, in its opinion, as the expert regulatory agency over this issue, has determined that these regulatory levels are set at levels that are protective of public health. The project would not result in any impacts related to formaldehyde. Very briefly regarding the Historic Cultural Monument, as was stated in staff's presentation, notwithstanding the fact that City Council excluded the executive building and parking structure from the Historic Cultural Monument designation, those buildings are considered as historic resources for the purposes of CEQA. Those DIR's analysis is based upon that and is full and complete, and then, of course, because of the significant unavoidable impacts, a statement of overriding considerations is before the commission for your consideration due to those significant impacts. Briefly regarding a couple of items raised in the day of submissions, there was a day of submission making some assertions regarding the project's analysis of solid waste due to difficulties recently with recycling and China. The EIR's analysis of the project's solid waste impacts are fully analyzed, and in fact, analyze the project's solid waste generation both before and after recycling diversion, and appropriately determines that landfills would have sufficient capacity to provide for the project. Another day of submission had some assertions related to the project's consistency with SCAG's regional transportation plan. The analysis in the EIR regarding consistency with the RTPSCS is robust and exhaustive, and is based upon both a complete policy analysis and also quantified considerations of reductions in greenhouse gas emissions based upon the project's specific characteristics, and the EIR appropriately concludes the project is consistent with SCAG's RTP. Those are the only things that I would note at this time, thank you.
Thank you Will. At this point, we're going to begin with our deliberations. This is a more complex case than we have heard digitally, so here's how I would like to proceed. I actually have a couple of technical questions, and then I think we should go around and discuss the project as a whole and the appeal, and then I want to have a separate conversation on the T-FAR allocations, because I think that that's going to be also a larger conversation. I don't want to get too muddled, so having those conversations separately, I think, will help us work through everything before us. But before we begin, and maybe this question is for Amy, I noticed that we don't have site plan review as part of the entitlements before us. Does that preclude us from addressing issues that we would normally speak about during a site plan review? Or maybe Lisa?
This is Will Lamborn with City Planning, I can briefly jump in on a piece of this, and Lucy or Lisa, if you want to jump in a bit more on the issue of site plan review. As staff understands that that would not preclude the commission from discussing issues relative to design and site planning and such that are typically afforded under site plan review. Through the T-FAR provisions in the code, the project is also required to comply with the downtown design guidelines, which in essence cover most of those same issues, and are cross-referenced in the code under the portion of site plan review as well. So under the guise of, or under rather the context of T-FAR and the downtown design guide, I believe the commission would have the same kind of authority to discuss and condition the project based upon those sorts of issues.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then one other question pertaining to the nineteen seventies building. I understand we had a lot of communication pushing back on the fact that the city did not landmark that building, but just so I understand what you're saying, even though the City Council voted not to deem that as historic building, it is still analyzed in the EIR as such?
Correct, it is still analyzed in the EIR as a significant historic resource.
Thank you.
For CEQA purposes, yes.
Thank you. I see no raised hands from Commissioners, does no one have anything to say? Let's start with Fahed, he's waving his hand at me.
Thank you President Berman, just for the other Commissioners, I have hosting privileges, but I can't raise my hand as a function, so I have to wave like a monkey to get Samantha's attention. I'll skip the T-FAR conversation for now, since we're trying to avoid that. I think this is a well-designed project, I know I'm always one who's very, not, I have different style viewpoints as other Commissioners, but I think this is a well-designed project, I like the project, I like the reuse of the area. My only concern, and it's the same concern I've raised before, with T-FAR-associated projects, these are for-sale units, not rentable units, and although they do provide a T-FAR, there is no onsite affordable, and I know the city really doesn't, or we haven't discussed a way to do onsite affordable for sale units. And I think in an area where we're talking about rentals going for three thousand or four thousand dollars for studios, and studios that are close by for sale for a thousand dollars a square foot, I think that the issue of not having affordable changes the area, and although we had a public comment, talking about creating more housing for people who are going to be working in the area, I don't know if that's true when we're talking about civil service employees mostly, who are not millionaires, and we're talking about million-dollar units, and I think that's something that we should keep in mind as we go around it, the size of the project and what's on the table in the future conversation on the T-FAR.
Thank you, I think you bring up a good point, and here's how I might frame the conversation as we go around the dais, is this, the entitlements before us have no requirement of affordable housing onsite, and they are not asking for any entitlements that would have required onsite affordable under JJJ either. The extra buildable floor area that they get is tied to that transfer of floor area, and that is the public benefit, so when we're talking about affordability, that might be the place where we're talking about affordability, is that public benefit payment. With that, I see that Commissioner, I have hands raised from Commissioner Perlman, then Commissioner Ambrose, then Commissioner Lern, and then Commissioner Mack, so I will go to you in that order, and then Commissioner Cho. So give me a second Dana, to unmute you. Go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, that is a concern I think all of us have around this, I expect most of us will have around the dais, or on the call, the virtual dais. Even Veronica's daughter, that we, that there is no, there's eleven hundred and twenty-seven units, and not a single one providing any sort of affordable housing allocation or concession, and yes, there's no GPA here, there is no zone change, but there's an SOC. And we do have to evaluate when we're doing an SOC, and determine if we really deem that a project like this is providing enough public benefit. And you don't get to double count the public benefit from the T-FAR, that's separate and distinct. The project itself, and I do see a lot of public benefit to this, I agree having a grocery store in that area will be helpful. I find it a little odd to have it inside of a historic structure, but, okay. I'm just, and I do agree that eleven hundred and twenty-seven housing units is something we need in the city, but we need, at all income levels, as Fahed said, we need them for people who are very low and low-income and workforce. And there's, as far as I can tell, going through all this material, no allowance here for any sort of housing for anything other than market rates. So that's one challenge I have with this project, and I'll be curious to hear what my fellow Commissioners think. Another one, I disagree with Fahed, I find this architecture to be very uninspired. I can see where they were going with the horizontal lines to be somewhat consistent with the Times Mirror Building, but other than that, these are rectangular blocks on top of rectangular blocks. I keep seeing, we get inspirational design in modular housing for permanent supportive housing projects, and then these market projects are just block skyscrapers. I don't understand this, and I'm sure many of you, like myself, have access to, we go online and you can see where projects are being built around the world that are so much more interesting. AC Martin is behind many of those projects, has been behind some of them in our city. This is not one of them, and I find it very disappointing to have something that's going to be in the center of our city, on a very iconic block, and it's so bland. So I have those comments, and my last comment on the appeal itself, I agree with Fahed, I don't think, I think Fahed said this, I don't think the appeal is well-taken at all. I think the draft EIR, and the final EIR, and the errata fully evaluated all the required impacts, and the MMP and the SOC addressed the impact adequately. So I don't think the appeal itself is well-taken. That does not mean the project is a hundred percent something I'm ready to approve at this point. So I'm curious to hear what other people have to say.
Thank you Dana, and as we go around, if you have concerns about design, if you could be specific as to your suggestions, I think that would be helpful to us.
I want Renee, that's what, we need an architect back, but go on.
Thank you. Okay David, go ahead.
I don't want to repeat everything that's been said, I agree with everything that's been said. My specific suggestion to Dana is to continue this project to date certain for architectural renovation here. I'm not ready to vote affirmatively on this project today. I think the architecture is, like every other ONI tower downtown, a big rectangle in the sky, except in this case, they have four projections. I find that terribly uninspiring, and I'm not ready to vote affirmatively on this project. I would be okay moving this, continuing it to a date certain, so they can come back with something, anything inspiring, and we're glad, I'm glad to draw it for them. If they can't, or we can reach out to Greater West Hollywood nonprofit that's been doing incredible architecture, or they could copy the federal courthouse across the street, or they could do anything other than a big rectangle in the sky. It's getting exhausting, and I think it's trashing the downtown skyline. I'm very disappointed in the architecture, love the use, agree with everything else that's been said about affordable housing, but for me, I can't vote in the affirmative, and when a motion's ready, I would vote to continue this project to a date certain.
Thank you David, I'm going to unmute Helen, hold on one moment. Go ahead.
I want to echo the statement that Fahed said, that although this project isn't asking or doesn't require any affordable housing, it is such a loss to see such a big project, for-sale housing, to not have any components of affordability. So as we discuss and we move on to T-FAR, I look forward to really thinking about how the public benefit and the T-FAR payments will really address that shortage of affordability. And I don't have any comments on the design, and I look forward to hearing what fellow Commissioners will say on that. It's always great to see projects that have local hire and pay prevailing wages, and think about living wages, so I want to, I hope we continue to see more projects like that. And I look forward to hearing our discussion on T-FAR shortly after the initial round of discussion.
Thank you, I'm going to go to Commissioner Mack, hold on one. Go ahead Karen.
I agree with everything everyone else has said. I, you know, when I was looking at the project, my first thought was, who is this project for? You know, I mean, before COVID nineteen, our poverty rate in the city is thirty percent. Like, who knows what it's going to be, you know, after we get through this crisis? So to really be thinking forward, you know, how do we evolve the city based on what we're facing, and really just think, be thoughtful about, you know, how to build a city for everyone, not just for, you know, those who are most wealthy among us. I have to say, I, you know, I love Brenda Levin and what she's able, has been able to do with many of our historic structures around the city, so that's an exciting part of the project for me. But, you know, we really need to think differently about how we address this affordability issue, even more so than we were doing before.
Thank you Karen. Okay Caroline.
Yes, this is Caroline Cho. I would just also like to comment on the architecture as well. I think Dana's question about, you know, can they do more? I think that they're just doing what they can at the cheapest cost, which is just replicating building after building in downtown and use the same architecture. And the question is, do you really want to see this skyline for the next fifty years, or however long these buildings are going to be? And, you know, especially if they're able to articulate a little bit more on the roof lines, I think we can see something a lot more interesting than just these rectangular glass boxes that we see all over, popping up all over downtown. So especially because this is such a special site for Los Angeles. especially because this is such a special site for Los Angeles, I would really like to see the applicant go back and, and build something or bring something that's completely different from what they've been doing and kind of stamping out across our skyline. Thank you.
Thank you Caroline. Okay, I'm going to Mark Mitchell. Hold on one moment. Okay Mark, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to go on record. I had, I have less of a concern about the architecture, although it seems like that's definitely going to be something we're going to discuss as a body because people feel strongly about it. And more of a concern about the lack of affordable housing. So, you know, as we move into the second part of this discussion, that's going to be something that I really want to focus on and see if we can figure out some solutions that make sense for the city, especially as has been expressed, you know, in, in, on a block and in an area that's, you know, special and right in the middle of downtown Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Veronica?
Hi, I just wanted to kind of summarize what my thoughts based on my feelings, because everybody's speaking, and I don't want to be left out. But I did want to say that I'm, I'm in agreeance with the need to have all levels of income for the hous, for housing. I do agree that the appeal on the sequel is not valid. I think the impacts have been properly evaluated. And as much as it hurts to think about holding back a project that is potentially offering jobs right now, I think it's necessary and agree with us possibly holding it back for reevaluation of the design.
Thank you Veronica. So I'll give my thoughts now. I agree that the appeal is without merits, and I already spoke to where I think it's appropriate to address the affordability, which I think is the second part of this conversation, but others may disagree. As far as the design goes, you know, maybe it's more subjective. It doesn't bother me. I think the podium does a really good job at speaking to the architecture that surrounds it. With regard to the towers, I think they're not, they're not striking. But at the same time, I don't know that I'd want to put like a stellar, striking tower right on top of the historic L.A. Times building to detract from it. I would want something that speaks to it. I think what's really giving some commissioners pause is the fact that the roof line is flat, and therefore the buildings are rectangular, as opposed to really taking an opportunity to do something interesting with the roof line. I don't know that I'd be in favor of continuing this item, although I will certainly, you know, back down from that position if others disagree. But I would like to suggest that we incorporate a condition requiring the roof line to be less flat and to be something that's more in conversation with the adjacent L.A. Times building that is, that is so historic and iconic. Let's go back to that conversation after we've had a conversation about T-FAR. So T-FAR was something that gave me pause on this project because I, I personally had not seen a project that came to us with that proportion of the allocation going back into the building. In doing my due diligence and my homework, it is perfectly appropriate that the developer makes the request. It is within the ordinance of T-FAR. They didn't do anything wrong by asking us to allocate the T-FAR this way. It's now up to us to decide if that is how we'd like to see it allocated, given the needs on the ground, given our own personal preferences. So I guess my question is first to staff. How, are there findings that are necessary to make in our allocation of T-FAR, or is it just the preference of the commission?
Will Lamborn Department is to be planning. Yeah, go ahead.
Under the T-FAR provisions in the code, the public benefit funds, quote, "shall serve a public purpose." And that's a policy call, first for the director, and then for the CPC, and then ultimately for city council, to determine whether or not the recommendations will serve a public purpose. So that is the discretion of the CPC.
Thank you Amy. So I am interested in hearing from commissioners, what they think of the allocation and how they think they might want to move forward with the allocation. So I am going to start with Commissioner Perlman.
Thank you. So I, I appreciate this, and I appreciate Samantha you shedding some light and asking, and Amy's input to remind us of the public policy component of T-FAR. I have seen projects where there have been components of, of the T-FAR allocation going to restoration of historic resources, and that is allowed as, as the applicant's representative statement. However, what gives me great pause here is that the historic renovation they're seeking to dedicate the funds to is the very building that they're purchasing, and they're seeking to use not necessarily to promote the historic nature of the building. They're not turning it into a Times Mirror museum, or an art gallery, or a public open space. It's going to be a multiple, multiple uses restaurants and grocery stores. I'm sorry, but when I go into Ralph's, or Pavilions, or Food for Less, or where have you, assuming we can get inside one nowadays, the historical nature of the building doesn't really resonate with me, and I don't really think about that, and that's a benefit to me as a member of the community right there. I appreciate that they want to restore this building, but they're restoring and improving the value of their own property. So I see the key benefit there, going back to ONI and not going to the public. I have a hard time allowing or agreeing that any of the funds should be going to anything other than affordable housing, especially, especially in this instance where they're building 1,100, proposing to build 1,127 units without a single affordable housing unit. Where are all these people going? Karen said, where are they going to come from? We're going to buy these units? But beyond that, where are all the workers going to live? Who are going to work at the grocery store and the restaurants and service the 1,127 units, et cetera, et cetera? Are we just going to have them live in the inland empire and get on the freeways and destroy everything we've been trying to work towards with making a central community? So to me, all of those available funds should go, be shifted from the historic resource component to affordable housing. And if I could though, while I have the mic, because I know this is, this is complicated, I, I just want to speak. I really appreciate everyone's perspective on the design and architecture. Samantha, with respect, my, my issues are not solely with the roof line, although I find the roof line completely bland and boring. And again, when I, when I think of, of A.C. Martin and Chris and what they did with the Korean Air Tower, where they made it far more interesting, this is, and I don't know how that transcribes, this is blah. And it, but it's not just that. It is the pure rectangular structure of these buildings. I've had them up on my screen for the past 20 minutes, and they do nothing to inspire. They look like so much around the city. I, I for one have a really hard time approving this project the way it stands right now. And I think David's suggestion that they return to us with better design makes a lot of sense, because I don't think we can and, or should be designing on the fly here. And I for one, with all due respect, especially with everything going on, I, I don't want to just defer this and then have staff have to deal with it. Because that puts undue pressure on staff. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you Dana, that's helpful. And as we go around, if you could also indicate whether you'd like a continuance, I think if we were to continue this, what we could do is continue it to a date certain to review the architecture, but also make recommendations of what we'd like to see in the staff report with regard to the T-FAR as well. And that way it can kind of be brought to us holistically as, at a later date. So please, when I call on you, indicate whether you would like a continuance or you would like to move forward today. Thank you. I'm going to go next to Helen Barnes.
I have one other point I need to mention.
Please.
Hopefully this will be addressed in the continuance. Another issue here is that one of the components of the, of the SOC, of course, is the traffic components. I note that this project is overparked by 83 spaces, which contributes to the traffic component. I find it a little inconsistent to have the overparking and the SOC. And if they go back, that could be something that they take another look at. Of course, at a minimum, I'd say if we're going to have overparking, they all have to have chargers. But more than that, I, I find it difficult to wrap my arms around that part of the SOC while allowing the overparking. That's my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I hear Commissioner Perlman stating, and what I'd like feedback on so we can move toward a motion, is what he would prefer is to continue this item to a date certain to address the architectural elements of the project with a T-FAR allocation that reallocates the funds from the historic preservation piece into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that reduces the parking to code due to the traffic impacts that cannot be mitigated. Does that correctly summarize Dana?
So much better than I could have said. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Helen next.
I agree with Commissioner Perlman's assessment on T-FAR with a modification. I think that 50%, or 100% of the direct provision should go towards affordable housing, given kind of the lack of affordability in the project as proposed. I think the discussion we had, we didn't get to have at the last commission meeting, is that, you know, that, not to pit affordable housing with open space, but the, I, I would argue in this case that the million dollar allocation of Pershing Square is going to make a minimal dent to a project that will take another $100 million, and is currently fully funded at its current stage. And I applaud, kind of, I'm a fan of Brendan, Brendan Levin's work and historic work, but I think in this instance, the preservation of the building is part of the project, and the greater need is for affordable housing, especially as we emerge from this crisis. And as we see our housing department think about creative ways to use our affordable housing fund, I think it's important to fund that fully at 100% with a direct provision. I would, I don't oppose continuing the project for a date certain to kind of modify the architectural component. And I do want to say that I appreciate kind of the pedestrian orientation of the ground floor. So I hope, you know, that continues to be incorporated. And I would also end by saying that I, I don't see any, I agree with staff's recommendation on the appeal points, so I don't have any kind of additions to add for that.
Thank you Helen. I'm going to go next to Commissioner Ambrose.
Great.
Go ahead Dave.
Thank you. I, I'm just, I'm so impressed with our conversation today amongst the commission. It's, I, you know, we've been on this for quite a while, some of us, and it's, I feel like the conversation is always, educates me, and I, I really appreciate what folks have said. Dana, you know, as always, I don't want to be duplicative, but I do think it's important for us to defend the visual environment in our city. And while I agree, we don't want to necessarily create some sort of competition, I wouldn't mind that either. You know, iconic skylines, have beautiful buildings sitting next to each other, and the myth that they have to be a mile apart or something is a myth. I am exhausted with the banal architecture. I love the use. I think ONI has brought so much to the community with their, their investment in our downtown. It's simply to take that to the next level. And given the requirements here for us to act, I believe that we can require and request of them just a little bit more in terms of design. As Dana or someone else mentioned, some of the best architecture we've seen is from the affordable housing community. And it's not about cost, it's about vision. And I think they can spend some time between now and then to think about a couple of things. One is the architecture. I certainly care about top to bottom. I also care about the conversation that we've been having around affordability, you know, and between now and then, perhaps they have a different vision of zero affordability. I don't know. It would be great to, to hear from them in the next hearing about that. If not, I do agree with the allocation discussion about reallocating the, the funds to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In terms of the renovation and preservation of the Times Building, I think it's both. I think it's both a public amenity and a benefit to the project. You know, it certainly does benefit the tenants and the residents. It's also a public passeo. And I, I don't, I don't think it's all one or the other, I guess is my point. So I would be okay with some sort of allocation in that way. I do think it's been an aggressive division of millions of dollars. I think, I don't know how I, where I would land on that, but if there was a decision to reallocate that, I would be comfortable with that. But I do acknowledge that there is a public component to the enjoyment and addition to our city's history to renovate and preserve that side of the building. It is not simply zero or 100. There is something in there. But I feel very strongly about the architecture here, and I would strongly recommend and would make a motion when, when, for a date certain, to reconsider the architecture top to bottom, as well as the affordability conversation. I am troubled that it's zero and/or the allocation. I think that could be a solution if they're not willing to do inclusive. I think I've covered it. And again, great comments today from the commission. I appreciate that and say ditto.
David, do you have any, with regards to the allocation, do you have any thoughts on taking the allocation away from Pershing Square and putting it into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I am like, I, I, Helen, I, I'm going to get a t-shirt at some point from Pershing Square. You know, look, at the end of the day, saving for retirement, if you think you're going to save $100 million overnight, you're not going to do it. But if, if 15 years ago, we had started saving $1 million before all these amazing reviving of downtown, that park would be done. So I'm okay with incrementalism and over time, starting to save, because at some point in the future, we can have what was once an iconic part of downtown as important as any other park in our city, back from the concrete nightmare that it has become. Regardless of phase one, I think we should start saving. And I think a million dollar allocation, while small, in the grand scheme of things, even at $100 million is 1%. And compounded over time can be more than 1%. So I'd be comfortable keeping it at $1 million, because I think the trend we're otherwise suggesting is to zero that out, and that concerns me.
Thank you David. Commissioner Cho.
Thank you. As a lot of my colleagues have said, you know, I don't want to repeat everything too much, but I also agree that, you know, I just don't feel that it's appropriate to spend that money towards the preservation of the building. As I mentioned in a previous item, that 40% of people making less than $40,000 have lost their jobs in March. What will that look like in April? What will that look, look like for the rest of the year? You know, I think this is something that we really have to take seriously. And I, I think all of the funds should go towards affordable housing. I don't want to be the hater of Pershing Square, but I feel like we've poured millions of dollars in there, and I go there with my, my kids, and I don't know where the money's gone. So if someone can show me where that money's gone towards and what's the improvements, then I would put that million dollars towards Pershing Square. But I think for now, it would be the best use to go towards affordable housing. And in terms of the, moving the, the item back, I'm open to sharing what the applicant has to say. I, I don't know. I mean, I feel like this is ONI. I feel like they come to us, and the projects that they show us are all pretty much the same, and it's kind of like this dance that we do. I mean, I would love to be I mean, I would love to hear what they have to say and kind of go from there. But, I mean, the company really has the opportunity to define LA because of the large projects that are going on. And I just, I just don't wanna regret that, you know, one day we look at a skyline and everything looks the same. And that's gonna be Los Angeles, and that's gonna be what we're known for. So I just really encourage the applicant to take this time to make some beautiful modifications to this project, especially because it's at such an iconic site. Thanks.
Thank you. Veronica.
Thank you. I think I already said how I feel about the possibility of extending the project. I would be open to that if the rest feel that that would be helpful. I did wanna ask, does the eight percent for Pershing Square have to go to Pershing Square? Can it just be kind of in a bucket of open space or for recreational purposes? 'Cause lately I've been on lots of meetings about the budget cuts that are gonna be happening. And cuts to our parks and open spaces is gonna be taking a serious hit. And that concerns me because it's communities, it's our communities that need the open space the most. So I'm wondering if it has to go to Pershing Square, or can it just be a general pot for open space development or maintenance of our, of our parks? So I don't know if somebody can answer that for me before I, I, I deep gone the other two.
Sure, I'm gonna have staff answer that. Lucy, do you wanna talk a little bit about T-FAR allocation?
Right, this is Lucy with planning. The, there's a history of, there's a history of direct provision in our T-FAR cases dating back to 2009. In most cases, they were brick and mortar improvements, such as improvements to alleys adjoining or streetscape adjoining the project. There's also been allocations, as we've mentioned, to Pershing Square, Lanny, there's deep green housing. So there's a variety of organizations that have also received allocations in this case. And this is one of two cases where...
I think, I think what we're trying to just do, Lucy, if I could just jump in. The question is, is can you take, I believe it's here in Commissioner Pedia Campos asked the question is, is that, that there's a, there is a direct provision for a certain port, a certain amount of money, it's a million dollars, for Pershing Square. Instead of the million dollars going to Pershing Square, can it go, can it go to more of a general fund for open space, not a specific open space allocation? So can we
Right.
kind of take a pot of it and say, okay, I get the fact Pershing Square is a hundred and eleven million, ten million, whatever it is, whatever Commissioner Learn mentioned, and this is just maybe a small part to get there. Maybe there is an ability to create a pot of money that could be more incremental improvements over time. Am I hearing you correctly, Commissioner Pedia Campos?
Well, I'm just wondering, does it need to go to that specific project, or can it be for...
You can go to other projects if you want. You just have to designate them to direct provisions. And if you wanna kind of talk, maybe you wanna elaborate, Lucy, in terms of how that happens technically.
Correct. So the city can receive a funding of any kind, provided that there's an account that the city can receive it for. So there's an identified account for a specific purpose, open space, for example. The contribution can be made there. So the only effort that needs to be done on our part is to identify that particular fund to make sure it exists for that purpose.
So can it go to a park, Wreckin' Parks? Can it, can eight percent of these funds go to Wreckin' Parks?
Right. So what we would need to check is to make sure that the existing accounts, so Wreckin' Parks receives funds through our QIMBY fees. What we need to verify is that that fund can receive money outside of QIMBY, so voluntary contribution. So that's the only thing that we would need to check.
So in essence, maybe it answers to Commissioner Pedia Campos, if the commission chooses to continue this, and if you want to put in your motion to have staff look at taking a certain amount of money under direct provision instead of going to Pershing Square, a more general type of open space allocation, we're happy to kind of go and bring something back to, which we think would meet, which would meet our code and T-FAR requirements. I think we get the gist of that.
I would really like that. Yeah, so for the other two, I would recommend ninety-two percent of the rest. If, if we are able to provide the eight percent to Wreckin' Parks, the rest, the ninety-two percent go towards affordable housing and not towards the project at all.
Thank you. And what I might suggest is if we do continue it, since we're kind of all over the map on what we're suggesting for the T-FAR, that we, I can go back, I'm writing all of this down and what the suggestions have been. If we summarize what our conversation was here in the staff report at the next hearing, so that we remember what we were discussing, and perhaps have some commentary from staff on the feasibility of each of those things, that would be helpful. Veronica, do you have other points? Okay, thank you. Karen Mack.
I appreciate so much everything that everyone has offered so far. My thinking in general is that I cannot even imagine, given the, you know, the level of homelessness that we have now, what that's gonna translate into, you know, as we move forward. And so I just feel like, you know, in good conscience, I really think that this should be allocated to affordable housing. And we all know how expensive it is to build affordable housing. So, you know, even, I don't know how many units would we get out of this budget, given that it costs five hundred thousand per unit or so. I mean, the modular, we can do it for a little bit less, but, you know, it's really a dire. So I, that would be my vote on the design issue. I do appreciate, as Helen talked about, the pedestrian orientation of the project. I think it adds a lot to the street life, so I would like to see that preserved. But I certainly can support, you know, really thinking about this building as a landmark for downtown and in the company of, you know, all of these other incredible monuments that are in that area of the city. So, you know, to not just be in a conversation with the Times Mirror Historic Building, but to think about everything else that is, you know, including City Hall, that is in that, in that area. I think those are the issues, right? Do you need to hear from me on anything else? Yeah, so that, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go to Bahid Korsand.
So I admit, I mean, Dana, you agreeing with me on my design observations is not a surprise. I have probably the lowest standards and thoughtful, thoughtfulness when it comes to design. And, you know, I'm very open and honest about that, so I always defer to those who have a better eye towards design. Just speaking on the allocation, I have a wider thought on it. You know, I took the walking tour of the old theater district, and you could see how the lack of investment in that historic corridor has really, really been a shame. And, you know, an opportunity to invest in, or having an applicant invest in a historic monument is, to me, a big deal after that walking tour. But in this case, I mean, the allocation goes to creating further value for the developer and the applicant. It's not necessarily a public benefit, more so than it is something that enhances the value of the property. That's one. Two, I think the coronavirus, as more than anything else, has exposed the national inequity, whether it's housing, education, jobs, income, just access to healthcare. And in this case, I just feel like, you know, when there's, we're talking about a huge city block, not just one tall tower in downtown, but we're talking about a city block. And within that one city block, we're saying, we're gonna have no onsite affordable. And maybe that is the rule, maybe that is what we have to work with. But just in my opinion, it's just inequitable. It's, we're saying that there will be no affordable there, and equal is great. I mean, getting the T-FAR and allocating that to affordable housing is equal. And I mean, but equal is not equity. And so we're excluding a major city block, as I think Dana said, was the showcase block of the city. We're saying that there was gonna be no affordable housing in that one giant block in, across from City Hall, of all places. And I think that, to me, sends a poor message on inequity. And I would hope that there is a way to fix that. And maybe that is where we continue this project on the design, but let the applicant come back and talk about what they can do in terms of onsite, and maybe there is a way to work out something where, in terms of T-FAR and onsite affordable.
Thank you Bahid. I do see Dale, that your hand is raised, and I will go to you to discuss the continuance. It sounds like a majority of this commission is in favor of continuing the item. While I would always like to move projects forward swiftly, it just doesn't seem like we as a body are gonna be able to get there. And I think there are some serious considerations that were brought up during this conversation. If we do do a continuance to address the design issues, I would also like the staff report to reflect the following conversation about the T-FAR, which were the following suggestions. One, that the direct provisions all go to affordable housing. Two, that the, that the sixty-one percent that had previously been allocated to historic preservation be allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Three, that all of the historic allocation go to the Affordable House, Trust Fund, and that the Pershing Square funds go to a parks fund. And then there was David's vision of some sort of allocation for the historic, keeping in mind that it does provide some sort of historic benefit, but some of those funds also be reallocated to historic, or sorry, to Affordable Trust Fund. With that, I'm going to unmute Dale Goldsmith. Dale, my suggestion, it doesn't give you a ton of time for redesign, but I think it gives you some fair time for redesign, would be to continue this to July ninth. I'm gonna unmute you at this time, and we can begin that conversation.
Oh Commissioners, once again, Honorable Commissioners, once again Dale Goldsmith. You know, ONI has a proven track record downtown. They've built a number of projects. They've invested hundreds of millions of dollars, and these projects get built. You've seen a lot of projects that look nice on paper, but have not yet and are unlikely in, based on current conditions, to ever be built. This project will be built, but we're facing some severe constraints. You know, we've worked very hard with city staff, with the PvP to address concerns. We've striven to have a project that doesn't compete with historic structures, including City Hall, but complements them. Could we have done a better job? Yes, I think we could have, and I think we still can. But my concern is, is that we're in unprecedented times. We're reaching twenty-five percent unemployment, and we're really in the phony war right now. The COVID-related economic, lockdown-related economic problems are gonna hit this city and this whole country like a tidal wave. And the financing windows are getting narrower and narrower. An extensive continuance and delay seriously jeopardizes this project and will deprive union workers of thousands, thousands of jobs. So we're very concerned about a continuance. And I'd like to suggest instead, a workaround solution, that we're allowed to go forward, but continue to work on the design, 'cause the design takes a long time to get it right. We've been working on it for years, and obviously, from your perspective, we haven't gotten there yet. So what I'd like to propose is to move the project forward, but with a condition that the staff and the CPC's Design Committee work on the design, specifically with respect to the, to the rooftop and the podium. Those are the issues that I think are the greatest concern, so that we can move concurrently rather than have a delay. And, you know, there's a saying that time kills all deals, and I'm concerned, particularly in these exigent circumstances as we, that exist here today, time will kill this project. So I respectfully request that we try to allow to move forward, still address your concerns. And with respect to the allocation, you know, there's a lot of important public policy considerations. We're willing to defer to your wisdom and judgment on the, on the allocation. We thought it was providing a benefit. We're still prepared to provide that extra benefit. But if you think that it should go to something else, that's certainly something we'd support.
Thank you Dale. I'm gonna do something since we have this, give me one moment. We have this ability to raise hands. I see that Dana and David, you have your hands up, but I hope you will indulge me here. If you could put your little hands down. I wanna do a quick straw poll. So, Bahid, you're gonna have to physically raise your hand, so I see it. And Commissioners, you're gonna have to digitally raise your hands. And I will read out what I see on the screen for the public record. If you are in favor of continuing this item, please raise your hand at this time digitally. I see Ambrose, I see Pearlman, Cho. So three Commissioners in favor of continuance. Mack, four, in favor of continuance. I can't see your hands. Bahid, is your hand raised? No. Okay. If you are not in favor of a continuance, so if everyone can put their hands down. You are not in favor of a continuance? I see Learn and Korsand. And Mitchell, and myself. Caroline, your hand's still up, so you are not in favor of a continuance? She is in favor of a continuance.
Pedia Campos, I believe.
Pedia Campos is not in favor of a continuance. So it looks like the not in favor of a continuance has it by a thread, which means that we still have to work out all of the T-FAR. So if we're not continuing today, we have to continue to have this conversation and get answers on the T-FAR with regard to how it is being allocated. Okay. I see some hands raised. Here's what I'm gonna do. Let's do the easy thing first. It sounds like we're all on the same page about the item number nine, which is the appeal. So let's dispense of the appeal first. Item number nine, case number BTT seven four seven six one one A. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to deny the appeal and accept staff recommended actions, including the technical modifications for item number nine. Staff, can you please give me a little input? If we wanted to require that the parking go to code, would that be in item number nine, or would that be in item number?
Will Lamborn, Department of City Planning, I believe that would be better suited to item number ten.
Thank you. So my motion stands. Dana, was that a second? Is that why you had your hand up?
No. Well, I'd like to have a chance. I find it a bit strange that we let the applicant have the last comment for us when it's our time of public discussion.
Oh, for sure. I'm only going on the appeal and wanting to continue our discussion on item number ten.
I'm fine. I'll second that, but I would ask that you please come back to me, because I'd like to have the opportunity during commission discussion to actually address the applicant's comment.
Absolutely. And since the commission was very torn on whether we're continuing, that will be part of our continued conversation. So Cecilia, we have a first and a second. Will you please call for the vote?
Cecilia Lamas for the record. Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearlman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ambrose? Commissioner Ambrose?
Yes.
Commissioner Cho?
Yes.
Commissioner Learn?
Yes.
Commissioner Mack?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Pedia Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Korsand?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you, Cecilia. Okay, I'm going to go to Dana.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
And, and I, I'm mindful of, of the strength, the climate that we're in. Um, I think we're, we're all aware of it and, and there are so many unknowns. Um, my, my concern, however, is that there has been a history of us being very clear in our design desires on project. And those not necessarily being followed after we have votes or give direction. And that is not to throw shade at anyone. We have a, I can't think of how many times I've said this. We have a distinct role set up by the charter and we have a responsibility that is separate and apart from the responsibility of various other city staff, employees, boards and councils. One of our roles as the City Planning Commissioner is to review these projects and voice our concerns as designated representatives. And to kick the can to someone else, I think is basically to allow to, to, um, cede our responsibility. And I do not want to do that, especially when we are talking about one of the most significant parcels of property in the city of Los Angeles. Yes, Mr. Goldsmith, it's, it's possible that, that you may have a financing that may dry up. It's possible your financing may dry up regardless of what we do. Um, we have nothing other than your, your comment saying, oh, any delay could hurt the deal. That's, that's true. Any delay could hurt the deal. However, I, I want to make sure that I'm exercising my responsibility as I took an oath to do when I review these projects and to make sure I do what I think is best for the city. And what I think is best is to make sure that we have a design that really stands out here and not to kick it to someone else to make, to do that, to make that decision. So if they can come back faster, great. If they need more time, okay. But I think that this commission should exercise its role and responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dana. I'm going to go to David next.
Great. Lower my hand. Uh, thank you. You know, this is self-inflicted. I'm not at all persuaded by their drama and a delay of a month or two. First of all, one of our findings is not their financial ability to finance a project. That is not in any code section we're supposed to review. I get it as people that are intelligent and aware. I went back to what they first released in the public zeitgeist. If y'all remember, it was a bunch of stacked cubes, which was super interesting. And very simply go back to that. You know, this, this is self-inflicted. If there's any delay, it's on their parts. They have, uh, gone from that original concept design to something that is, you know, bare bones. I think it's an iconic piece of property that we get one chance at, and I think we should not miss that chance. And their financials is not a consideration that we should base our decision on solely, although I do understand why we might consider it. Um, additionally, we're fundamentally changing this project. We're asking them to move, uh, to consider inclusive affordable housing. We're asking them to change architecture. Um, uh, we're changing their parking and we're going to take a vote on that today based on, you know, what we can work out in a few hours. I think we should take the time that's necessary, have them come back at the next meeting if they want and, uh, present. But, uh, this is a self-inflicted, uh, problem, um, that they've created themselves to have zero inclusive affordable housing and, you know, architecture that belongs in the skyline of Phoenix, not Los Angeles. Um, I don't think we should delegate that responsibility as we've done in the past to staff and director. It'd be nice if we said finally that if it's an iconic tower in downtown Los Angeles, the CPC is going to exercise its full jurisdiction and, uh, use our independent voice to ask for, uh, what Los Angeles deserves, which is great architecture, which this is not. And I, I go back to designing on the fly. I don't think we should do that. I don't think we should delegate. And given the level of changes we're asking for today, I think it's fine if they wait a meeting or two per them to come back and share with us their vision. Um, I wouldn't support a, um, uh, this project moving forward today. I, I think waiting a meeting is perfectly reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, I would also like to add before I go to Veronica, Caroline and Helen, that, um, in light of Commissioner Pearlman's, uh, comments, I would, uh, be in favor of a continuance in this matter. I'm going to go to Veronica.
Continue the, the station because we don't have an answer whether the eight percent can go to wrecked parts. I was going to say that I would be in favor of a hundred percent affordable, um, if we don't, if we don't continue it and we can't get more clarity on this. Um, and I don't know, my understanding is we're not saying, okay, build, um, keep this design right. What we're, what the suggestion was is to create a condition to move forward, but still come back with a better design. Did I, is that not what is being proposed here? So we're not saying yes to, right?
What we'd be saying if we moved it forward was we're moving it forward, you have to change the design, but you don't have to come back to us. We're giving the discretion to the department.
Is that what David means by kind of kicking the responsibility to somebody else? Because where?
Yeah, and we've done that repeatedly and the results are boxes in the sky. And I think, you know, the leadership downtown has been wanting and I think we're reading about that in the paper. I think as an independent body, let's take the full measure of our appointed responsibility. These guys went to market with a beautiful iconic design. If you guys want to look at that, you can see it online. And then they, they turned it into, you know, a, a, a very boring version of that. So I would like to see them come back to us, give us the respect as an independent body that we are and exercise the full measure of our authority as people that are, uh, able to make independent judgments outside of, you know, uh, pressure. And this is their own creation of their problem. And I also have the question of, about what you're saying about how we can allocate that money. And more fundamentally, I would like us to continue today and say to them, go consider inclusive affordable housing. Period.
So we, we don't have to continue this in a month. We can do it at the next meeting, so two weeks from now.
I would.
Right?
Well, I would suggest, uh, President Millman, it's okay if I just kind of interject. Um, and if, uh, staff, Lisa or Lucy has any other, uh, thoughts on this. Um, a few things I heard. I, I think I heard, um, a fairly different allocation of, of T-FAR on the direct provision. So it'd be helpful to understand that a little bit better. Um, also, I think of a fairly significant, um, re- redesign of the project. Um, and, and I think what I heard was, was it's more about the quality of the design than it being a, um, a, a background or subservient building, that it can be an iconic building and that even Commissioner Pearlman had pointed to, I believe, the same architect's work at the Crane Air Building and how much he valued that architecture and it's a signature building. So when you're talking about that, you're saying you're going from, it's a very different building, something that feels more like the background, that's something that's going to then, um, compete for the foreground of a place. Um, so I think that's a fairly different, um, design. And I think I would appreciate, I think for staff, we would need to have conversations with the applicant and their design teams to be able to move something forward, to bring something back to the City Planning Commission. And I think that will take us a little at a time to get there. The, I believe the time to act on this is July seventeenth. Um, I believe there's a July ninth meeting. If you want to, I think that it would probably be difficult, um, to do, to do a, the kind of redesign that I'm hearing from the commission and to have some renderings for you ahead of time to take a look at, respond to, to at least shape it to a point in time that, that if you want to approve and if it's not quite there yet, at least it's close enough where you could put some very specific conditions on where the commission is going to feel that they have the, um, that they, that, that they have the, the assurance that it's going to, um, really be much closer to what their vision is of what, what this should be like and the commission is, is, as they take their role, very importantly, um, as, as representing the community and representing how, um, how buildings fit in to communities, especially downtown LA. So I think that for us, um, it would be probably more than beyond next meeting. It would, we'd have to look and I'd look to see, um, understanding that all of your, all of your meetings are full, um, because of, because of the, the, um, pause we had to put on meetings to do with COVID nineteen. And we added, we're adding an extra meeting in June. Understanding that, that, you know, this will go on to a packed agenda and we understand that that may require other things to happen. So I would recommend that we would continue to June. I would look for Lisa or Lucy to see if they have, uh, a specific time to be able to work with the applicant team, get materials together, get it to you in advance of the meeting so you have an opportunity to understand it.
Right. This is Lisa Weber. If I can jump in. So the, the elements through, with regards to the T-FAR allocation, uh, the excess parking, uh, whether or not there will be any, uh, affordable units, uh, included onsite with, within the project, those are, those are elements that I think that we can get answers to very quickly with your direction today. The, the design and the kind of design that I'm hearing the commission wants to pursue will, will likely take some months. And, and I would say that, uh, a July ninth date is, is doable where perhaps AC Martin would be prepared to come to you with some concepts, one or more concepts for the commission's consideration that would focus on the roof line and would focus on the facade of the, of the towers is what I'm, I'm hearing are kind of the, the two focal points for the architectural discussion.
That's helping answer your question, Veronica. We can't hear Veronica.
Oh, Matt, sorry. My phone was on mute. But yes, that was very helpful. Um, I think I'm going to change my vote to, to a continuance.
Caroline?
Yes, uh, well, Vince actually answered my question. I was trying to see if there are some way that we could move, or both Vince and Lisa, if we can move it a little bit closer. Um, while I am very, uh, sensitive of, you know, numbers and that, you know, things change on a day-to-day basis, I, I think beyond what the commission is doing, probably what's going on with COVID has changed the, the, uh, financing markets. I would just say to that, I don't want us to feel pressured to make a decision, but I also wanted to see if there's a way that we can work with the applicant and do something a little bit sooner. But it sounds like July is still the month where we'll have to revisit this, um, this issue.
Even with the, uh, this is Lisa Weber, even with the July ninth date, um, it, it still not, might not be fully fleshed out, but it may be moving in a direction where the commission at that point feels comfortable in giving direction to staff on a particular conceptual design and having us continue to work with the applicant where we can even bring it back for the commission to see under director's report, uh, at the time of, of building permits, for example.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that makes sense. I think we want to work with the applicant, obviously. But, you know, I mean, I, since it was put together, so much has changed and, uh, whatever, um, the applicant thought that they would probably be able to sell each unit for, I'm sure it's quite, changed quite a bit. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think it's fully on the commission, should we delay it for a couple of months that it is because of, you know, this that they're not able to go ahead with the project.
Thank you, Caroline. I'm going to go to Helen Learn.
Um, I, I'm swayed by the, um, comments by fellow commissioners as well as the explanation of possible pathways by staff. So I would also support a continuance and in hopes that the, um, development team will look at inclusionary zoning, affordable housing as an option. And I, I too agree that if we can, as a commission, be flexible looking at conceptual designs sooner than later and being able to approve it, uh, because it does take a significant amount of work to, uh, redesign a project to a level, um, that has, uh, detailed drawings that we are seeing today. Um, so I would, uh, encourage us to be flexible and, and actually hear from the applicant if there is a sooner date that they'd be ready to show conceptual designs and be able to, um, kind of respond to kind of the other comments made by commission. And, um, I would, uh, I would, I would lean towards that than waiting for a, a full, complete redesign to be detailed out, uh, before we see this project again.
Thank you, Helen. Um, so what I'm hearing is that you want to ask Dale if he wants to bring it back sooner than July ninth? That's a nod. So go ahead and unmute Dale Goldsmith's line.
Uh, once again Dale Goldsmith. And I didn't want to make it seem Commissioners Pearlman and Ambrose that the applicant has any desire to cut out your input. What we've, what we've highlighted here is an imperfection of the process. You know, the applicant works with staff and it is years. It has been years. And because of the mayor's directive, we have no ability to talk to your commissioners beforehand. We come into a hearing and well, we got it wrong. Uh, we would much prefer a collaborative process where we get your input. And yes, continuing it to July ninth maybe is a way, although it could begat yet another continuance or another continuance because, you know, a few weeks is not a lot of time to make the fundamental changes that I sense that you're asking for. But I did want to make it clear that I am not suggesting that you delegate your authority. I want to embrace your input, but in a more collaborative way. So the condition that I was proposing was not to delegate it to staff, but to the commission's own design committee so that we can have a series of working meetings, uh, in a way that will really fully get your input and be able to, uh, proactively take into account and come up with a better project. We're still allowing the project to go forward in the equity markets, which are, are becoming increasingly problematic. And, you know, the suggestion that, um, that some of this was self-imposed hardship, well, maybe we didn't get the design right over that, you know, a, a tough one to foresee based on the information we had. But the COVID nineteen situation is not the applicant's fault. I would respectfully disagree with that. And the world is changing in a very bad way. And I'm very concerned that this unprecedented situation is going to, uh, really hurt the project. Now, will it, you know, could things get really bad and not get built at all? Yes, that's very possible. But the more time it takes, the deeper we get into the recession, the more likely that this project will not happen. It's an important project. And, um, I'd like to try to come up with a way that recognizes that, reflects that, does not minimize the commission's ability to have input in the project, but allows for some level of concurrency. So again, just to be clear, my suggestion is not that you delegate it, but rather you have a committee or even the whole commission, if you'd like, ultimately have a design review say. That's similar to what many cities do where they have design review commissions. The planning commission considers the planning aspects. The design review commission considers design. The, the trouble here in the city is that except in very few areas, we don't really have that option. So that's what I'd like to propose and for your consideration. Thank you.
Dale, that's very interesting. And while I think in different circumstances, that would work very well, right now there is not a fully composed. I apologize for that. Two devices competing with each other. Um, there's not a fully composed general design committee. We had an ad hoc committee for parking podiums, but my sense is that, you know, some of the participants on that may or may not be interested in being on the design committee. There may be people who are on this commission currently who are not on that committee who would want to be on that committee. We are not allowed to have more than a certain number of people on that committee due to Brown Act issues and, um, due to quorum issues. Um, and I think on the fly, that's not something we can do for this project. And it's something that certainly in the future may be possible, but I'm not comfortable moving in that direction today. I do think that the best way forward today, um, is to continue to July ninth. Um, you know, we can continue to discuss this idea of an ad hoc committee. Um, we can agendize that, but because it's not even something we've discussed or agendized, I'm not comfortable doing that on this project on the fly. Um, Commissioner Ambrose, I see that you have your hand raised, so I'm going to go to you.
Samantha, can I go first? I mean, I was, I was waving my hand. I think David's going to make a motion, but.
Yes, David. Sorry, Bahid, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Uh, David, I think you're going to make a motion, but I just wanted to jump in before you did. Um, I, I, I want to make sure that, you know, when we're, if we're continuing, and I believe we are, um, that onsite affordable be taken very seriously.
that onsite affordable be taken very seriously. I, I just went back through my notes, and the regional metro connector project is just on the other side of this block. So, we're really talking about two blocks with no onsite affordable. And I just want to make sure that whether it ends up happening or not, that we, we ask the applicant to come back with some, something and looking at it, and us as a body looking at it and taking it seriously. And two, rather than saying come back and give us some new designs, David and Dana, if maybe there is some clear guidance you can give them on what you're looking for, so we don't have to sit through another hour and a half, two hour presentation and the design not being enough. So, if there's some clear direction you can give them on what they can do to improve the design, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. I see David's hand raised, so I'm going to go to him. I'm guessing he was going to make a motion. And as part of that motion, if you could include what Vahid is asking for, I would appreciate it.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
I move continuance of this item to July 9th with the discussion previously held and with regards to specific direction to the applicant to improve the articulation, the use of color and materials to make this an iconic structure, to look for inspiration in the currently existing block, perhaps the federal courthouse across the street or City Hall. But to somehow turn this into something other than a rectangle in the sky that's gray would be the direction I would give. They did release early renderings that were inspirational. As I recall, they were kind of cubes stacked on top of each other. Not that they need to do that, but to consider, for instance, the Frank Gehry that's a couple of blocks away, the Grand Project. Those are not more expensive. They're just simply better designed. So, I would encourage them to look at the beautiful structures within a quarter mile of them for inspiration. But I would say increased articulation, doesn't need to be a box, roof line. I think the hiding of the podium is well done. I think the use is appropriate. But that would be my kind of encapsulation of the conversation we've had today in terms of instruction. In addition, I would say strongly consider the inclusion of affordable housing. Given the context of where we are, would be part of my admonition and request to the applicant as part of my motion.
Thank you.
This is Dana, am I, I don't know. This is Dana Pearlman. I, I would second that. And in connection, just as a slight commentary, in connection with David's last comment, I do think to the extent that there would be inclusionary housing, would love to speak, that might impact the manner in which we make a determination on T-FAR allocation. So, I, I agree that this should be continued. I, I think Vahid, I, I think the applicant has a sense of what we're looking for. Something that's iconic there. They've got the architects to come up with stuff. They have done that before. There's some wonderful buildings that I think are in the hopper in downtown LA right now with much more interesting design, you know, cantilevered pool decks and what have you. Not saying copy those, but there are other things that can be done, and they know that. And I look forward to seeing that brought back to us in July.
Thank you very much. Cecilia, we have a first and a second. Will you please call for the vote?
Excuse me, President Millman, customer for clarification. I didn't hear anything in the motion to, so I heard in the motion, design, articulation, color, form, materials. I think form is what probably is in it too, because you were talking about different shape of a building too. And also the, the, looking at it, include onsite affordable. Was there anything in there that would give us at least some direction on, on, on T-FAR allocation? Or?
So, on T-FAR, I think that the, one was to research whether we can allocate to a general parks fund.
Right.
And the suggestions that I put on the record, I read it into the record during the hearing, that, that those would be enumerated in the staff report, so that we can see what...
So, that was a list of things to study, but not a particular allocation?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Cecilia, we have a first and a second. Will you please call for the vote?
Cecilia Lamas for the record. Commissioner Ambrose?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearlman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cho?
Yes.
Commissioner Learn?
Yes.
Commissioner Mac?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Padia Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Corson?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you so much.